Okay. I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, April 11th, 2016, and the time is 7:00 PM. Dr. Richardson, there were some items in the table file.
Yes, if you look at the table file, we have some personnel items, including several appointments and some increases, decreases, and changes in assignment. And all those are in the table file for you.
Okay. So if there's no objection, we'll add those items to the agenda as we move forward. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School District to address the board. I'd like to remind the public that this is a listening opportunity for the board and not a time to debate and issue. Also, the Minnesota Government Data Practices Act prohibits comments about specific student matters, even without naming the student in open session. This includes the public comment portion of our meeting. The board respects and values input on student matters, but when it relates to a specific student or to a specific student matter, such input must be heard by the appropriate personnel, such as the building principal or superintendent, and not during an open meeting of the school board. So with that being said, if you would still like to approach the podium, identify yourself by giving your name and address, and if you represent a group, and we ask that you limit your remarks to three minutes. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board?
Good evening. My name is Dan Magnuson, 21 Jefferson Lane, Northfield. I'm here regarding the possibility of cuts made to the Spanish Six program. And I'd like to start by reading a letter that was sent by Michelle Soniga, who was unable to be here tonight. She says, "I just learned about the possibility of Spanish Six being cut from a rural language program, and I wanted, as a parent of one of the students enrolled, to ask you not to cut it for next year. When the Copaneros program was put in place, one of the major concerns was how to adjust the high school curriculum to meet the needs of students who would essentially be hitting their heads on the ceiling of the Spanish language programs we had when they were juniors. Spanish Six emerged as a way for them to transition to academic ENGE Spanish and becoming fluently conversational. It was a way to make sure we gave students the commitment to helping them continue their language education and institutionally making a commitment to language education in our district, K through 12. We now have a small group of students who want to continue with their Spanish education, but because of numbers may not get that opportunity at the high school. This seems incongruent with the mission of our school and the commitments made to the students when it came to Copaneros. They embarked on this program when they were in first grade, and as parents, we believed they would have that opportunity to study in Spanish all the way through high school. This flies in the face of what they and we believed as we put them in this program when they were five and six. We know that the PSEO opportunities exist, but for all of these students, they are not practical. It is difficult to learn a language in an online situation, especially at their level of fluency. Also, none of these students have time in their schedules to travel to other colleges to take PSEO courses. Please keep Spanish Six in the rural languages program and help them finish what they started in first grade. Thank you." And I'd just like to add that the expectation has been for these students from day one that they would be able to continue in Spanish all the way through their high school education. And now, as of today, all indications point to the possibility the Spanish Six would be cut. I know that the enrollment numbers are down. I know that there are dollars and cents involved with this, but when we made that commitment and created that expectation, and the district created that expectation, that these kids would be able to continue to do this, I don't think it's right for us to pull the rug out from underneath them going into their senior year. And so with all the other factors involved, I hope that the district and the board will do the right thing for these kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the board?
Good evening. I'm Linda Kobach, 22 Jefferson Lane. I'm both a parent of high school junior and an eighth grader. I also teach sixth grade reading at the middle school, and I'm here speaking on behalf of the students who have registered for Spanish Six next year. We have students who have been a part of the Spanish program their entire school career and now possibly will not have an option to take an appropriate Spanish class their last year of high school. Our students plan to continue learning Spanish at the college level. However, it will be detrimental to their Spanish skills and to the opportunity to advance their education at the pace they had expected if there's a lapse in their Spanish. Even though not all colleges accept AP scores, many of them have language entrance exams which allow the student to gain free course credit, which is a substantial savings to that college student, and it allows them to accelerate a completion of a Spanish degree program. Spanish Six is a course which includes a community service component and a cultural experience in their Spanish education. We are asking that a viable option be offered to the Spanish Six students in order for them to continue their Spanish at appropriate level and without interruption. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? Okay. Thank you. We will move on then to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packet minutes from the regular school board meeting held on March 14th, 2016, as well as the minutes of the special school board meeting held on Tuesday, April 5th, 2016. Is there a motion to approve both of these minutes? Moved by Jeff Secondin. Second by Rob. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes of both the regular school board meeting held on Monday, March 14th, 2016, and the special board meeting held on April 5th, 2016, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Richardson, announcements and recognition.
Yes, we have several this evening. First of all, Northfield Mock Trial was proud to represent the community at the recent state championships that were held at the St. Paul County Courthouse. The Raider Mockers, which is the name of the group, led by senior captains Padre Court Kevin and Jack Bowmaster, finished an impressive fifth place. This is their third consecutive trip to state and their best finish. All-state honors also went to senior Noah Mandelfeld for his lawyering and sophomore Peyton Mackey Waller as a witness. The Raiders lost for the third year in a row to the eventual state champions. High school Spanish teacher Stephen Cade and Paul Bowmaster are the coaches for the Raider Mockers. The seniors who volunteered through Accelerate Northfield were recognized by the mayor, and I believe this was senior, when we talk about seniors here, we're talking about senior citizens, not seniors in high school. The mayor read a proclamation, which was followed by juice and cookies. This took place in council chambers last Tuesday afternoon, and Michael Garlets, who's our Accelerate Northfield coordinator, was also present for the ceremony. So again, congratulations to those folks because the work of Accelerate Northfield is an important way that we can support our kids in grades K through 12. The ATSS team of Cheryl Hall, Mary Grace Hansen, Hope Langston, Sue Bolton, Rose Turnercliffe, Dan Myers, and Carrie Duba had an opportunity to present at the Minnesota Department of Education Spring ATSS Conference, which was held on Monday, April 4th. The team presented the successes and concerns in the journey toward the completion of the first year of ATSS implementation. And again, we've heard some really good things about how ATSS is supporting our students and especially the outstanding work of our middle school and high school staff who are working with that process. Also, the area learning center announced that they were awarded the Promising Practices Award for their backpack program. The ALC will be receiving the award at the Character Recognition Awards Ceremony that will be held at the State Office Building on May the 26th. Cheryl Matheson submitted the application. The ALC staff is doing great things. It's exciting to see their work being recognized and the work of the students in implementing that backpack program, which I think many of you are aware is a program that provides food and other items that are sent home over the weekend so that students who may be struggling in terms of having appropriate meals and so on over the weekend are going to know that they have that food available for them during that time. Finally, the South Central Service Cooperative, CSC, and Mankato Community Education Recreation partnered on April 2nd to offer the spring chess tournament to students from across South Central Minnesota and beyond. Fifty-five students in grades K through eight from Eagle Lake, Fairmont, Jackson, Lakeville, Mankato, Mapleton, Northfield, St. Clair, Walnut Grove, and Wyndham competed in the elementary, middle, and upper divisions based on grade levels. Students were awarded by grade level and also as division champions. Now, this is where Anita is going to watch me to make sure that I make sure that we say these appropriately because at my advancing age, I might just, it might just slide off the edge. Congratulations to following Northfield students. First of all, grade six winners were in first place Colin Thomas Green, second place Will Bowmaster, third place was Peter Hillman, and also Saxon Eggie tied for fourth place. In the upper division, winners were in second place Colin Thomas Green and Will Bowmaster, and Will Bowmaster tied for third place while Colin was in second place. I think I have that right. And again, I would like to personally thank our two board members who were able to go up today to meet with our legislators. It's always great when Fritz and Julie or other members of our board are able to go up and have a chance to meet directly with our legislative leaders and to talk about the issues that we're facing as we go forward in a very short session where we're not yet seeing much happening, but which I think will come to pass in the next several weeks. So again, thank you guys very much for taking the time out of your day to do that. That's very much appreciated.
It was excellent afternoon, and I think what we know and what we continue to hear from legislators is that they do want to hear from board members, they want to hear from community members, and I think what we have a tendency to do when we know a legislator is particularly supportive of education issues, we don't maybe feel like we need to touch base with them as much. But what we heard loud and clear is, we need to hear even though we're supportive because we can go to our caucus and say, "Look what we're hearing from our communities." So anytime, I think as board members, we can be advocates, as community members, and particularly as parents. You know, it's really the place to make an impact, and we know that they listen to us. And unfortunately, sometimes superintendents don't get the kind of ear that a school board member or a community member gets. It carries a lot of weight with legislators. So we remain cautiously optimistic on the session, so we made a little headway with a couple of key pieces that we would like to see as a district. So we'll continue that and help the community stay engaged in what's happening in St. Paul because it really does affect us significantly. So it was a good afternoon.
You bet. One other thing just I would like to share with you, just to let you know, and kind of the continuing saga now for the past decade and a while has been trying to work on the speed zone issue on Division Street or 246. We've gotten news through the city that Mendot has approved the 30 mile per hour speed zone on the Highway 246. That zone will start at Jefferson Parkway and go south roughly a quarter of a mile, which would be on the other side of the entrances to the middle school. As part of that, they are looking at installing a crosswalk to the middle school that's part of that process. That crosswalk location has been identified on the south side of Arbor Street at the middle school. So that's the, Arbor Street is the one that is right across the street from the middle school building. And as part of that, as part of that, one of the things that we're going to be needing to deal with will be determining a strategy for, once the students cross that, will we then have to create another crossing situation to take them back over to where the sidewalk is? Or will that potentially speed up the process of thinking about some kind of additional sidewalk on the south side of the entrance to the middle school to allow the students to get clear up to the entrance to the middle school before they have to cross? So it's, that's a really, this has been a really good thing to see happen finally after all this time. And again, it does not solve all of our issues, but getting that speed limit down is kind of the first step toward trying to make a significant difference in the safety for our kids on Division Street. So just wanted to share that with you, and I know that the city will be probably coming to us to talk about how we might participate in the process beyond the fact that we will be the ones who would be looking at hiring the adult crossing guard that would need to help get students across the street at Arbor. So just wanted to share that piece as that's something else that is a positive thing coming up.
Excellent. Board members, any other announcements? Okay. So with that, we will move on to our first item for discussion, which is enrollment in high school world languages and other elective courses. Here to do that presentation is Joel Lear, principal at the high school.
Chris, I did want to point out that the more announcements you have, the less likely I will end up in the second half of the student faculty basketball game tonight, so feel free to continue on.
Is that a good thing or a bad thing?
Well, depends on whose perspective you're in.
Okay, right.
So you have in your packet a memo that I had written earlier this week, or earlier this week, early last week in terms of the question, really harkening back to a question that, or a discussion that we had probably in the '09, '10, '10, '11 school year time period, and really the question about the board's interests in terms of the language offerings, specifically how many offerings are legitimate for a school our size to have on a regular basis. We are 10 years into the Chinese program, which was the last of the languages to be added to our program. And as you see in the memo, there are the, kind of the historical numbers of Chinese 1, 2, and 3. And you see that when we started in '06, '07, we had 50 students, and I believe, if memory serves me correctly, almost all of them incoming ninth graders. So really set up a program that had the potential to build. There are some pieces within the confines of our Chinese program that are a little bit limiting. One is that our instructor, I jokingly say that she has about three full-time jobs, and then also really teaches our Chinese classes out of the goodness of her heart and an interest in really expand, or sharing her culture with the students of Northfield. But as you can see in the information that I had sent to you, that there has been a bit of a trend in terms of kind of a downward motion to enrollment in Chinese. And I want to be clear that this conversation is steering toward Chinese because it's the language that I'm using to illustrate this point, but it's really about kind of harkening back to that conversation from '09, '10, and really to ask if the board is interested in dialoging about that, really resurfacing the question of how many languages are viable and how many languages are, pardon the expression, are too many for a school our size. Obviously, no number of languages are too many if resources are infinite and the school certainly can support that. But at that time, we had, you as a board had kind of committed to four languages in moving forward with that model. And as you can see from the chart, that was when we, in particular in Chinese, we were registering 45, 35, 29. And at that time, if you remember, we moved from a Chinese 1, 2 model to an alternating schedule where we had 1, 2, and 3 basically moving in and out of a cycle so that students could actually get three years over the course of their time here, even though the teacher was only teaching two sections at a time. So this is going to seem a little bit of an angle turn as I move to my next point, but initially, when I asked Dr. Richardson if I could speak with you tonight and present this information, it was really through the angle of looking at the potential of short term, even as soon as next fall, potentially looking at a reduction in Chinese with the potential, depending of course on what the board's perspective was, to look at the potential phase out of that. At the same time, I was manufacturing this document and that information, I was dialoging with Gao Hong, our Chinese teacher. One of the, I guess I'd say, one of the problem solutions that really hadn't been in play in my mind's eye as I kind of looked at the question of decreasing enrollment and needing to be a steward of the resources in the most efficient way possible across the curricular areas, was the question of a 2-3 combination class. And Gao had done something like that a few years ago and just found it very difficult to manage those two groups. We do a, in German and French, we do a 4-5 combination, but at that higher level, there's a little more independence that you can ask of language students that isn't quite there in terms of that 2-3 split. So at that time, we kind of ruled that out as a continuing model, and then that's when we shifted to that three years over the course of, or three languages over the course of two years. But in between time, Gao has adopted new curricular materials that she believes would be a much better tool in terms of delivering a dual content in the same class period. So really, what I stand here to share this with you, because I'm not, I don't back away from the notion of I'd be interested in your sentiments in terms of engaging in the long-term conversation to say, "Are we a school that, for whom it's viable to continue to offer four languages?" Or do we begin the conversation again about what a process might look like to examine that? But secondarily to that, you know, Gao being prepared to offer the 2-3, and I visited with Chris about this, it was literally moments after the document had been sent out to you, that with Gao ready, or able to offer a 2-3 combination class, we are able to, we'd be able to offer a class for both of them, that curricular area, keep those students in the Chinese pipeline, but also honor the notion of a finite number of resources. So we wouldn't offer the 1, which wouldn't have been the case anyway. We had all three open just to test the registration waters to see how many students would be interested in the Chinese 1. But we would offer 2 and 3 then as a single class option. And like I said, Gao believes confidently that that would be a viable choice for the students that are already in the pipeline, so those 2s and 3s would continue on with their program. Because initially, this document asks the question, would you consider the notion of the 2s, which would be a number of, 6, being discontinued after a year of language study? So I'm here really so for two purposes, to share that with you, so that, you know, that there is an adjustment to the information that I'm sharing, not the enrollment numbers, but certainly to the solution to the enrollment problem, that we can combine those two and keep all of the Chinese students in the pipeline. But also to know that, you know, as you look at these numbers, that obviously language can be cyclical in terms of interests, but also just to, you know, that it be a time to potentially revisit that question of looking long-term. So that as an administrative team, while we're looking at numbers, it's not a question of, "Well, what should we do? What should we do?" That it's more a direction from the board that says philosophically, "This is what we believe in Northfield as a board and as a school community." And with that.
Joel, can you take a little bit of time to talk to the board about what are kind of the unique issues that we are facing with Chinese?
Sure.
In terms of as singleton classes and when the instructor's available to teach them?
Absolutely.
And what other singleton classes occur at the same time that require students to make choices?
Right. And the biggest of those keys, so as I mentioned, Gao doesn't really have three other full-time jobs, but she's a very busy, busy woman, and so she is limited to those first, and for this coming year, it would be first three hours of the day, but up to this point, in the first 10 years she's been here, been limited to those first two hours of the day. Similarly, because we have traveling music staff and some facility limitations, we have two music spaces for three ensembles, or three programs. Orchestra is a program that needs to be first and second hour because then the orchestrate seating and arrangement is moved out of the choir orchestra room, and then the choir takes over for the remainder of the day. Because orchestra occurs first and second hour. Band then, the symphony band and the, sorry, the symphony orchestra and the concert band need to be the same hour so they can share instrumentation. So really, those music classes and the language classes tend to collide during those first two hours of the day. So there may be a student who very vehemently wants, you know, language X, and so we'll use example of Chinese, but also has played in the orchestra all their school life or in the band. There are only so many places we can put Chinese in band and orchestra in order to make all of those combinations work. And as I stand up here and talk about the 18 students registered for 2 and 3, that doesn't factor in the possibility that those collisions could be happening for some of those 18 students. So this is the absolute maximum number of students, and, you know, we try the best we can to make that number zero in each of the classes, but as you know, the model that we build, we're shooting for about 95% compatibility in terms of student requests and the schedule that we build. So, you know, this is the maximum number. It could possibly be lower than that. So when we factor those pieces in, it does become a little bit concerning when we talk about kind of the continuance of a program, when we know that when we see trend-wise, the numbers are decreasing, and we also know the limitations of both personnel and physical space that we have access to. Any questions about any of those pieces?
Board members' questions? Rob?
Rob, please.
So if you, as you have it out here, if you have Chinese, are you proposing Chinese 1 and Chinese 2-3 as a combo for next year? Is that right? Or?
What I would be, well, we've never offered all three, all three years of Chinese in the same year. So we would offer a 2-3 combination.
Okay, and that would be the only class?
Exactly, right.
So then, if you project this out to the next year, you would have people who have done 2 but not 3, so then, I mean, how could you then proceed to offer 3 to the people who were in the combined class before?
Right, right. And I think that's a fair question. And in, you know, in an effort to answer that with an answer that maybe isn't completely satisfactory, even to my own brain, you know, when we initially started the Chinese program, we knew upfront that it was going to be a program that we'd be able to offer two years of Chinese study. And it was really, once we were into the program, that we began to look at creative ways to offer that additional year. And I know that sounds a little bit cold and uncaring to that group that is moving on to 2, or from, yeah, from 1 to 2, but I think that that's, at least has to be part of the conversation. I also, you know, when we look and receive our staffing allotment, one of the things we talk about in, among department chairs, when we discuss enrollment, is good and bad numbers. So there may be years when you have, and a bad number would be something like a 43, where too many kids for one section divided in half, now you've got really small sections of something else of that same class. So there are some years when the good numbers are dominant, and there are some years when we have, when we run into those situations. So 6 is a troublesome number, I'm not going to lie to you, but there are, you know, there are circumstances across the content areas that allow us to do some things in a given year that maybe are, that were handcuffed a little bit in another. But that's absolutely, I mean, it's, Rob, to your point, it is pushing a decision off, you know, a year. It's keeping those kids in the pipeline, but we'll be staring the same decision in the face when we come to that point where that number of kids has an interest in moving on. Because right now, they're all sophomores, so they would be, they would be here for a year. And really, it's the question that was posed by the people who spoke during public comment about Spanish Six, you know, really that philosophical question that are we, you know, as a district, do we commit to the, you know, once they're in the pipeline, that we see the pipeline through? And it, to a certain extent, it is married to, and at the same time, it is in conflict with really what we have been in the time I've been here and long before, that is student-driven schedule. So student enrollment, where they choose to place themselves in terms of requests, has always driven the schedule. We don't set three sections of baking and pastries, and when they fill up, they're full. You know, Ben Fisher in Randolph will build a schedule. Classes are placed where they are. Now, granted, a much smaller school, I understand that, but classes, electives fill up, and then you have to pick something else. Here, students register for classes, and then we build the number of sections based on that enrollment. So it's a number of philosophies that you could call it get married or that collide, depending on your perspective, that then brings about those types of questions.
So I have one question on the Chinese, and then you had brought up the Spanish, so I have a second question on that. On the Chinese, I noticed between '14, '15, and '15, '16 that we didn't offer a Chinese 3. It looks like it was 1, 2, 1, 2.
I'm sorry, can you tell me the year again?
14, 15, and then 15, 16, if I'm reading that correctly.
It shows no Chinese 3 class in either of those two years, Joel.
I wondered if we had so much attrition between 14, 15 that we decided not to offer?
Right. If my memory serves me correctly, the 14, 15, don't quote me, but I recall a registration of 1 that following year. And the interesting piece about Chinese, and I don't want to say it's germane to Chinese, but I think the nature of it being really a potentially a two-year offering and at most a three-year offering. most a three-year offering, it pulls a variety of grade-level students in, so where we can look at, and they can nod if, if I'm wrong, but the Spanish teachers who are here, that if we look at Spanish one, typically, there, there aren't many juniors and seniors taking Spanish one. That does happen, but we can kind of make predictions about those grade levels, and Chinese has been a little bit more around, you know, kind of all over the board in terms of the four, four grade levels that are, are taking that class. So I can confirm that for you, Ellen, but I'm, I'm pretty confident that it was an issue of the eight students in, in 14, 15, and Chinese two, that the number of them that graduated or weren't going to continue on with that third, third level were the reason that we didn't end up offering that. And it's, for some reason, one registrant sticks in my brain.
And then on the, the Spanish that you had brought up, so are you, are you looking at similar options that, that you were presenting on Chinese?
Well, and actually, a couple of people had posed the question of, of a combined course, and just so you're aware, if, if you're not already, there are eight students registered for, for a Spanish six, so that's the number that we're working with. But the question has been posed about some option to combine, and really just haven't had a chance to dialogue with the, the department about the viability of that. That is something that in the, in my office, staring at the master schedule, I say to myself, wow, great idea! And it's possible that, you know, in, in terms of Gao's two, three a number of years ago, that, that was what I thought, and she said, whoa, we can't do that because we tried it once and it didn't work. And obviously, we're shifting gears now, so, so that's something I certainly want to, would dialogue with them, because, but, you know, anytime we, and I appreciate the, the comments about Spanish six, very much so, because it's, it's, it's important, one, I recognize that I don't make these decisions in a vacuum, but it's also important that, that we hear those perspectives and kind of what those, 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 that belief system that was in place when students entered the Companeros program, when they started school, at least started first grade, so, but yes, looking at any and all, all, all options. One piece to understand, too, and, and I know that I've, I've had individual conversations with, with many of you in terms of kind of the, the detailing of how the schedule was built, really, there, you get to a point where there are, you know, hotspots X, Y, and Z, and let's say there are three, and it might be that you're looking, that I'm looking at the staffing that I haven't assigned, and I have, I can solve two of those problems. And so we, you know, we kind of debate Scott Peterson, who's doing his administrative internship, you know, and I kind of go back and forth, looking at that, that preliminary staffing grade to say, okay, how do we, how do we solve the most problems with the, the remaining options? And sometimes, it's staring at, you know, three problems we can't solve, and then we, you know, we begin to look at any and all possible options. So we're really very much in that, in that stage of saying, okay, how can we, how can we make everything work? And then really stepping back from that to say, okay, if we can't make everything work, what is it that is going to be in the best interest of, of all students or the most students? And certainly, those combination classes are, are options, but just something we'd want to dialogue with the department about.
Board members, Fritz?
Are there other departments, is there precedent for classes ending up with enrollments of six or eight in any other departments ever, or is this the only place that that ever happens?
Ever. No, I understand. Typically, and I, you know, I think I can safely say that we, in the time I've been here, we haven't run a, a separate class of less than 10 students. And the reason I say separate class is that when we combine, we've combined French four and five and German four and five for years, and those courses can be a combination of a six and a nine, you know, for a total of 15, or something similar to that. We do have, you know, there are school districts, in fact, I think it was New Prague a few years ago, when we were still in the Minnesota Conference, where they talked about that the, the board had passed a, a resolution establishing kind of a cut enrollment, so classes needed to have 24 or more, or they would just, you know, automatically be cut. There's a danger to that because there are, I mean, there, there are departments where the viability of the program requires some flexibility in that regard. There are also programs that are, you know, my colleague in the, the main office, Jeff Akhoff, who's a recovering science teacher, would talk about that, that lab classes need to be smaller because of this, you know, the safety factor for the things that they're working with in chemistry and physics and biology. You know, our, our technology and engineering department would, would say the same thing about woods and welding. So there are dynamics throughout different programs that, that kind of ask for different, different levels of, of enrollment, or, or thinking about, you know, what are the caps and what are the minimums? So we have, I, I appreciate that flexibility, and at the same time, be very simple to, you know, be able to say everything under 18, you know, from, simple from the scheduling standpoint, from the staffing standpoint, but that would really render, you know, our comprehensive program something that really wouldn't be allowed to go on anymore. Because we do, we do have a system that, that allows students to chase their passions, and sometimes they're chasing passions that 16 other kids share and, and no one else does at that particular moment in time.
So are there always a number of classes in the 10 to 20 range, or is that also relatively rare, that you're sort of in that, the 18 and up range is pretty normal, and anything below that is pretty exceptional?
Yeah, you know, I would say, I would say that, that yes, we typically have classes that are running in the teens, but I would, I would say that by and large, most of them are probably 15 to 19, that when we start getting, you know, below that line, it's, you know, those are the classes then we begin to, you know, to consider for dropping.
So 15 to 19 is, happens a fair amount, but is kind of on the low side, and below 15 is really kind of low.
Exactly, exactly.
Can you give us an estimate in terms of?
Oh, how many?
About the, the classes that are the 15 to 18 versus the percentage of classes that are 25 or 30 or more? Because I, and I guess, Joel, just to kind of frame that, we think about one of the things that came through highly clear in the thought exchange work that we just completed, the number one issue that people had was around class size.
Right.
And I know that over the years that I've been here and that you've been here, we have faced some classes of 37 and 39 and 40-something, and, and knowing that when you have a certain amount of FTE to work with, you're always on the tightrope of trying to think about how do you balance those two things out? And that, that if you allow classes of 15 to exist, then that's going to raise the enrollment in those classes that are already high.
Correct.
And I think, as you're saying, you, I think you guys do everything you can to try to think about, are there creative ways, are there ways we can make this happen? But I think it is important for people to understand as we go through this whole process, that's a constant issue of saying, the more classes of 15 I have, then the more other classes that are going to move into the 30 to 35 range because that's...
Because of FTE concerns.
That's all FTE we have, that's all the teachers we have, and we don't have additional dollars to buy additional teaching staff, especially where we're understanding that when you buy those teachers, you have ongoing costs. This isn't one-time expenditures like you guys talked about in the legislature today, where we're looking for one-time options. This is, once you create this, it creates tails. So if you, if you buy additional sections of classes, or you buy a section of classes that is small, then there is a direct and negative impact on the other end of the spectrum for those classes, where you already have 32 or 35, now it might become 37 or 39. So I guess I was just trying to think about, and I think Fritz has a good, he's trying to reach a good point, is, is that 15 to 18, is that 10% of the, of the classes, is it 20% of the classes?
No, I would say it's probably, in real numbers, probably four to eight classes, not 48%, but four to eight classes that we run.
Out of how many classes?
I knew you were going to ask that, Chris, and I really wish, it would be, I'd very proud myself if I had that number. No, that's quite all right, and it's, it's interesting because it's in our eighth grade I want to say 135 total classes that we offer, total courses.
So four to eight classes of 15 to 18?
Yeah.
Out of 170, how many?
135.
135 classes, which means that all the rest of them are 20 or more.
Right.
And a chunk of them are 30 or more.
Yes, I think our typical, we, we refer to the, the math, science, social, English, that our, our building-wide average is just under 32, 31 and a half, 32 students per And then across, across the curriculum, 20, 20, I want to say 29, but again, factoring in some of those smaller classes, the big number factors in, things like band that has, you know, close to 70, choir with 65, you know, so it is a...
It's the outliers on both ends.
Right.
I'm guessing that the issue of, this same issue of having challenges for languages that are in the second tier of popularity and keeping the numbers up is probably a relatively common problem nationwide? Do, and there's no reason why you would have actively been seeking out what the national, the standard for handling that situation is, but it could be that that's a well-solved problem among a bunch of schools that have had the same problem, that there's some conventional way of bundling students together to get the, the net class size up. I'm...
I guess I would share, and Joel, you may have a better handle on this, my sense would be, a district of 4,000 students like us is extremely unusual to have four foreign languages at the high school level. There are a whole bunch of school districts in the state, the vast majority, that probably have one or two max. I'm, I'm watching you guys. So I think that, that's part of the issue is, and this is something we've talked about forever in Northfield, Northfield really has high expectations. We want to have a great variety of opportunities, we'd love to be a Dyna. Unfortunately, we're not funded like a Dyna, and we're never going to be funded like a Dyna. But I think, that's the thing that I think is an issue that your secondary principals have to address all the time, is high expectations for opportunities for kids, but with a budget that is, would be more of what other districts would be thrilled if they could get two foreign languages of, in that same setting.
To be clear, what I'm shooting for is trying to unbundle the questions of, how many languages do we feel like offering, I mean, not feel like, how many languages do we value offering?
Right.
And unbundle that from the question of, if we were to keep the number of languages at four, is there any way of making the Chinese program viable? The maximum thing being putting one, two, and three all together and somehow teaching them as some kind of one-room schoolhouse, which Gao Hong may have no interest in doing, no, it could be that no one in the country knows how to do that, or that it's simply impossible. But on the other hand, if we decided, we really wish we could support Chinese, we've found three school districts that have a model that supports putting all the kids together to keep the numbers up, that might be, so it, it just unbundles those two questions. It could be that supporting four languages is a non-starter on its own, in which case Chinese is clearly the casualty because it's got the smallest enrollment numbers, but if we decide that we value having four languages, it could be that there's some oddball solution that somebody in the country knows. And I've been talking, on a separate issue, I've been talking to some of the people at the National, I'm going to get the acronym wrong, the National Association of Minor Language Teachers, about how standardized testing works among different languages, and those contacts might also have some good ideas about how to pull off the situation of, you decide that you want to have four languages, as long as there's some way that you can assemble classes of no fewer than 20, then what miracles do you have to produce?
Sure, and I think that that could be certain, you know, in terms of the initial question that I'm essentially asking the board to, to engage in the discussion, as part of that, I'd be happy to, you know, send out the tentacles to see if we can, you know, find that information, whether it be the information...
Or, or I can, or I'd be happy to partner with somebody to do that. So to the extent that...
Because I, I think that the two pieces that we're dealing with here that are the add-ons, are the add-ons of a facility that doesn't allow us to do what we need on the music side, which then drives certain music classes being available in certain periods that, that then force kids to make choices there.
And that's...
And, and then the second piece, which is, we have an instructor who, again, we feel very fortunate to have, but at, at worst is only available two periods in the day and only at a certain time in the day, not available at another time in the day that might be more workable, and definitely, and, and we couldn't do this contractually anyway, would be even the idea of saying, well, you know, she could teach one class here and one class much later in the day, well, then you run into the snag of you just can't, you can't make that work contractually.
And I think I missed a piece, the, the schedule collision is at the middle school or at the high school?
The high school.
Right, okay.
Well, and I mentioned the middle school, sorry, go ahead.
So even at best, that collision would not go under any circumstances, because that's just Gao Hong's schedule, okay?
Yeah, I think it's...
So there, so there, there are multiple miracles that need to occur.
It's Gao's schedule, the only thing that would change it at the middle school would require you to turn them, or one thing that would change at the high school would be you'd have to turn the middle school on its head in terms of, of where they schedule music.
Turn the middle, oh, yes.
In other words, you have to flip it so that you, you, you drove the middle school band orchestra classes into the morning.
Right, I'm not fishing to force that.
So, yeah, it, it would then have a tremendous negative impact on the ability to carry off the middle school schedule. So it's, I, I think, I think what Joel, from Joel and my conversation, what we have, what we're coming to with is, we have a very difficult situation, and you can tell that this is not about, you know, we, we just want to blindly remove or take away a language, but it is just trying to think through, is there any other strategy that can make this work, other than what we've done to this point, which is to have the board subsidize out of its own money, which really, it doesn't have to keep doing that, subsidize the, the very small classes in Chinese or a number of sections in Chinese.
Unless, unless there's some way to say that since the aggregate number of students who are interested in Chinese hovers around 30, if the leveling were pulled out of it, or if some way, if there was some way of massaging the leveling so that all, the entire Chinese contingent were all in one class, one hour of the day, then, I'm not claiming that's possible, but if we discover that to be possible in a way that was possible and Gao Hong felt like doing it, then that would be a way of causing the program to be allowed to continue, unless there, there might be other reasons why we don't want to have four languages. I'm not...
Right, no, I totally understand.
Ellen?
So I, just to follow up, so for Spanish, I understood you said any and all options are still being looked at, which is why we're only talking about Chinese today, right? And then the second piece, I guess, is that one thing is what I heard is, is we're kind of postponing this by year, but you wanted to know whether the board wanted to look at, if we were going to say that four doesn't look like it's going to work, what would that process look like? And my concern is, let's postpone it a year, is the, the six sophomores that, I think, you know, I don't know that that's a very honest way to, not that you're being dishonest at all, I just mean, I just feel like, on the board's behalf to say, oh, we'll just postpone it a year, and then we can let those kids know next year. Granted, it might be that only one of them wants to continue, but it seems like we should at least ask you the question of, if we, if we find like that there is no other option, then what would that process look like in time to, to address those students that...
Right, and I don't pretend to come to you with a, with, with an intended, intended phase-out plan, if you will, but I could see that taking a number of forms, and you're right, I think that the, the discussion playing out long past when students that are registered for two continue on instead of maybe pursuing a different language. I, I think that, that part of that conversation could be, again, kind of harkening back to the, I mean, these, these two questions, the, the question of Spanish six and the question of Chinese two and Chinese three are related in the sense that we're saying students in the pipeline. What is our philosophical commitment, but also what is our, our, yeah, what is our commitment to, to seeing those students through to the, to the terminal point of, of that particular language study? And that could easily be that, you know, a part of that. It does, it does create a situation where, you know, if we're saying we're phasing out one of the languages, that language is Chinese, but we want to respect the students in the pipeline, then we, we are, we're looking at a section of Chinese three next year that would be, you know, no greater than six, and potentially already looking at a Chinese two section that's, that's less than six for this fall. So absolutely, I don't want to pretend that that question just kind of fades off into, into darkness, but at the same time, if it's, if it's, you know, married to the question about, you know, the offering of Spanish six with the eight students, or any other language that, that comes up, we've encountered very small... or any other language that, that comes up. We've encountered very small numbers smack in the middle of a, of the progress through a language. Then I think that's where, you know, maybe I'm looking for some guidance from the board to say, this is where we are at philosophically as a district, so that we as a high school administration, and Greg at the middle school, kind of understands where, you know, where the decision-making needs to land as a result of that philosophy.
Board members, are there other questions?
But is this the time that we're trying, is, is this the moment that we're trying to create that guidance, or is that better for later discussion?
I think what I would be asking for would be, like I said, back six years ago, seven years ago, you know, it was clear that the board at that time wanted us to move forward with, with four languages and committed some additional dollars to that. So I guess what I would, I would be happy to kind of build some information for the board to review, if it were interested in at least. And I'm, I'm not looking for commitment one way or another, but just a willingness to look at the, you know, the information, the longitudinal data, the information that we could glean, kind of similar to some of the examples that you were, you were sharing, Fritz. And then at some point, whether it be a task force or a subcommittee or, or another meeting where we talk about it here, that at least be able to, to share that back and then, and then kind of make a declaration, if you will, on how the board feels in terms of philosophically moving forward with four languages or fewer.
I, I had one, or two, one, one question, one comment. How many, do you know how many students are in Spanish five this year?
Third, thirty.
Um, no, currently enrolled. Yeah, I'm just trying to get a sense for, of those in, those that are choosing to go on to Spanish six, what percent of the students?
Right, so that would be the AP and.
So, the current Spanish five is in the twenties this year?
Right, and how about the AP?
And AP is thirty-seven, thirty-nine. Was thirty-nine, now thirty-seven.
So it'd be that thirty-seven from which those eight are coming.
Okay. And then the other thing that I think we, we recognize too, in terms of the opportunities that we fortunately have been able to give our students in term of, in terms of Chinese to date, we would not have that opportunity if it were not for Gao, because we know that there are literally no Chinese teachers out there, and that Gao has been teaching on a variance, which the Minnesota Department of Ed has been able to grant us. But, you know, so that, that sort of is a little bit unique, and that we're even able to offer it. And if it weren't for Gao, we would not be able to offer Chinese, because, you know, as part of the variance, we have to post that opening every single year, and we do not get anyone.
It's actually a community expert, is what she's called. And you're right, it has, we have to go to the department, to the board of teaching every single year. Matt has camped out there for the last several years in a row, because every year they're reviewing it, saying, well, you know, why can't you find a viable Chinese teacher that's, that's available? Well, we're, we've got a four-tenth position, not in the, in the metro. And, every once in a while, we get someone else who applies, but then we find out they really aren't qualified.
Or they won't drive. I mean, we've had a, a number of times where a fully licensed candidate has applied, and we will contact, and then they'll have missed that it was a four-tenths job, and they're just saying, we're not, we're not able to drive that far. So really, the truth is that it's, it's very limited beyond Gao, unless there was someone else in the community who would qualify for the community expert license, which, this is, this is truly an area that is, when you talk about hard-to-fill areas, this is a very hard-to-fill area. So, i- it's very true, without Gao, we would, it would be very difficult for us to continue.
My only suggestion for the board, as you think about this moving forward. I think Joel, very appropriately, is sharing with you tonight, I think, the concerns he's feeling, and especially knowing that he's, again, is looking at a hundred and thirty-five classes and the needs of students, the twelve-hundred-and-fifty kids that have to go into those hundred and thirty-five classes, and trying to think and balance out the comprehensive nature of this, of the high school in terms of, how many courses can we physically offer? With the, the other pressing need of trying not to have class sizes on the other end go to an extreme, where we really are concerned about students being able to learn well when the numbers are so high. And so I think as we go through this, I think Joel is going to need from you some direction before we get to the end of this school year as to where you want to go, because he's got to build, finish building the schedule over the early part of the summer, so we can get kids their schedules and move forward. He needs to know, you know, what your, your decision is about, are you willing to allow us to run with just two and three right now? And basically tell our, our Chinese one students, who are basically freshmen, you need to look at Spanish, you need to look at German, you need to look at French, if you want a world language, which is great, here's three other world languages that you can go into, and the numbers in, in those will be strong numbers as they've always been. And in fact, we know that the German numbers have increased significantly, and the French numbers, I think, are fairly stable right now.
French numbers are solid, yeah.
So, I think that the, conceptually, what's going to be important is, I think, not to put those new freshmen coming in at the, not really knowing what, what's going forward for the next four years. You know, are they coming in and taking a class that then is going to disappear as even an option after they finish the, you know, the freshman year? Or are we going to just not offer it all and say, well, it may come back in another year, but at that point then, people had to make other choices? So, I just think it's important that, if there's additional data or additional things you want Joel to work on, what I'd rather have us try to do is to have him come back to you sometime in the next month and a half, and, and really pose the question is, kind of, what are you prepared to do in, in terms of this issue? Because I think we just need to know where we're going. And, you know, I, I think both he and I are right now working under where we were several years ago, when the board basically said to us, we don't care how small the numbers are, we'll, we'll cover the, the four-tenths to cover that, so that you don't have to take it out of your FTE budget. You know, that's, can't really be a long-term solution, I don't believe. Especially when we have other classes that would argue, we have eight kids that are interested in Spanish six. Do, you know, do we not do those so that we can do a class of six in another language? And none of these are easy answers. These are tough pieces, and this is, this is what gets administrators here to turn. Joel, not yet, right? So, it, I, I guess that's all I would appreciate, is that the, the board, if you have some other things that you want Joel to talk about, and I know that he will be talking to Spanish folks on the Spanish side to talk about that particular piece, but I think it's the idea that on, on these, on the Chinese, we really need to get a decision made before the end of the school year, so he has a way of setting up the schedule going forward, especially for the, for new students. And if we can get, we can get two and three students in, so that they get another year as we phase it out, that's an option. If you're really wanting to keep it regardless, we need to hear that. And then understand that there will be other sections of other classes, and people will say to you, if you're willing to do that, what are you willing to do for us? Okay.
Um, I just had one point of clarification as well. So the eleven that have expressed interest in Chinese one, we don't know if they would potentially have conflicts, if, for example, they're music students?
Right, eleven would be the absolute top end, yep.
Okay. So, board members, if you have any comments or other discussion points about sort of what's been laid before us in terms of a decision? And then, if there's other questions or clarification to get back to either Dr. Richardson or Joel, probably have them come through you.
That's right.
That we can, again, I, I appreciate that you're coming forward with this, and it is a big decision. So I also appreciate the time you're giving the board to really think about this, and make the decisions that we'll need to make. Not easy ones for sure, but we will make them.
Very good, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Joel.
Thank you. Okay. So that, board members, is our only item for individual action, or, I'm sorry, for discussion. So we'll move on to items for individual action. The first being resolution discontinuing and reducing educational programs and positions, which we standard do this every year. So, Dr. Richardson?
And I guess on, on this piece, because I know Matt's been working through this and the second item, I, I guess I just want to provide some, have him provide some clarity for you in terms of kind of what step this is in the total steps that we, we take care of, why this resolution needs to occur, even though we may be still working on options in terms of how these would actually lay out. So, Matt, you want to share that with them?
You bet. So you know in February, you passed the annual resolution directing us to take a look at programming, just like what Joel was kind of saying here this evening. And then basically, this part of the process is, at this point in the registration schedule for the, for the spring, we often bring to you some areas that the registration isn't quite there for what the current staffing is. You know, over the years, we've had a number of different elective classes that have been on the resolution at this point. There are some years where that comes to fruition. At the next meeting, we may bring names of staff who potentially would be reduced as part of the unrequested leave process. You also know there are several years that things work out over the next few weeks, because this is really crunch time in the scheduling process. So, items like that were discussed here tonight are those things that are continued on over the next couple of weeks. And so this part here is what the administration is telling us, is that these two areas are the areas at the high school, where the registrations are down to the point that they don't believe they can continue to support the same number of tenured FTE in that particular area. So to be really clear, what we're doing tonight is not necessarily, you know, completing the process of reducing any coursework or anything like that. It's simply this next part, because we have to be able to do this in order, if we were to have to place people on unrequested leave, there are a number of legal timelines that we have to hit. So you know that we've done this, we've had a number of different elective courses on this list over the years. In some years, yes, they do go to fruition, and, and there is a name that's associated with that for some kind of unrequested leave, or it might be a smaller probationary contract that's offered, if there are probationary staff members in that particular area. And so that's the key thing, is this is the next step in the process. And so, things can change between now and the next meeting. And even if we were to reduce and put some people on unrequested leave, there are still other things that happen with the schedule where some of that FTE could be brought back. To my knowledge, at this point, no specific courses have been offered for complete dismantling, or, or not being offered for the next year. But we asked them to give us that total amount of FTE. And that's what we have here tonight, is that resolution authorizing us to continue with that process. So should we need to place individuals on unrequested leave that we're hitting those timeframes that are required by us legally?
Yeah, so this is really step two in the multi-step process.
Really four, is what it is, yeah.
Hi, this is an item, item for individual action, so prior to, let's move, or, is there a, a motion to approve the resolution discontinuing and reducing educational programs and positions? Moved by Noel, second, second by Ellen. Okay, so board members, discussion or questions or comments regarding this resolution? No questions or comments?
No, I have a question.
Fritz.
Looks like you do too.
Okay, go ahead.
This resolution that we're talking about, so this is, this is not the resolution that says, we are, this doesn't definitively kill Spanish six, for example, this just, this says, we're continuing the process of keeping our options open for, and we have to hit it on the deadline.
Correct, so what we're saying is that the high school has the ability to reduce by four-tenths in the area of Spanish, they would not reduce more than that.
Has the ability.
They have the ability, and then the two-tenths in art would be, again, the ability to do so. What we're not, what we're not able to do after this point is to have additional reductions, because again, if we have a tenured staff who would be affected by unrequested leave, there's a number of different timelines and hearings and other pieces of appeal that need to be accomplished by the appropriate due date. So this is really that piece of saying, yes, we understand where your registration is, you're able to reduce up to this amount at this point for next year. If we had probationary teachers in particular areas, we, we could possibly do some additional reduction. But at this point, these are the two programs where there's not enough registration to maintain the current FTE, and if there are tenured staff who would be affected, this is the, I, I believe in the case of art, actually, it would be a probationary teacher who would be affected, but we try to be as transparent as we can with the areas. And again, some years, we do make reductions, and some years, there's some shuffling and some other things that happen where there's not a need.
It's the have, have the ability to, that is clear in the language here, though.
Well, and remember, we're hitting legal timelines, so we're having to put people on notice, you know, departments on notice, that this is a possibility. And the, the key thing comes when we start to add names to the agenda.
Rob?
That was kind of my question. I mean, the language seems pretty definite. Be it resolved, that the following positions be discontinued, I mean, that sounds like we've decided that there's something that we're going to discontinue, and we, I mean, and we see it's point four FTE in Spanish. We haven't really been able to have, we haven't had time to have a discussion about the advisability of that, or the, or the possible options for, you know, alternatives to that, to discontinuing that. So, it's a little bit hard to just, I mean, this seems like a blank check at this point for.
It's kind of the opposite of a blank check, though, because the, the place where the decision actually gets made is, as Matt said, when the names are placed next to this, you still, you vote again. So, this, this resolution just says, this is the maximum we could do. Is it what we will do? Not necessarily. And, at, at the end, we could come back to you, we could give you names, you could say, no.
So there's going to be another chance.
Yes.
Specifically, Spanish six will have this question.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, because each of those will have, because you're, at that point, you're going to be voting on be, on actually a person that's there, because what you're going to have to do then is using your information from the contract, you will be determining who has the lowest seniority in, in the Spanish area, and that will be the person that if you're calling out a reduction in FTE, that's what's going to happen. So, you have another opportunity. The problem, as we said before, is you can't even ever get to that step if you don't do this step in between. But this is, this does not force you to make the final decision. It just makes, it opens the door that it can be done if you also choose to do this specific vote on the people that are identified, and they're not identified at this point. And again, I would think back, if you, those of you that have been on the board for a while, you know that almost every year, we have several FT, pieces of FTE that are being recommended for reduction. And in many cases, those don't end up coming to fruition, because we work through processes, we come up with different strategies to make it happen. But, as Matt said, you cannot go forward if in the end we say we got no other choices. If you don't open the door with this particular resolution, you can never do anything with these FTE.
Yeah, and there's a number of things that happen over time, you know, in terms of various sharing arrangements, or other kinds of pieces that happen within the schedule. We've had times where there's been an area that has been slated for reduction, but there's a couple of classes in another area, and either the person has a license in that area, or they achieve, we file for a variance, so the individual's not reduced. So there's two different pieces to this. There's both the departmental reduction potential, and then there's also how people are, tenured staff who are tenured at a particular FT, and what they are essentially guaranteed to have, unless we go through the unrequested leave process. So there's really two different pieces spinning here. But, over the years, I, I, you know, we've had business education on this list, we've had industrial technology, we've had other, other pieces, I'm, I'm trying to think of other, I think we've had facts on it over the years, you know, so on and so forth, not in the last couple. But, it's typically because of what Joel said about the student-driven schedule. You know, when you, when you run the schedule based upon the registrations, this is a natural byproduct. byproduct of it. And thankfully, many times over the last several years, we've been able to make it work. You know, either there's been some kind of, sometimes it's been a last-minute resignation or there's been something else that has played out to where fortunately, we have not had to lay people off typically. But unless we authorize the administration to continue the process, then we don't have any flexibility. As we pass this resol, or if you pass this resolution, as you do many years, it offers the flexibility to continue on down the line. I can't tell you if it's going to work out or not. Joel doesn't have the crystal ball on his desk, but, you know, he continues to work through that process, and hopefully, these pieces can be worked out over the next few weeks. But they may not, and we may need to come to you with, you know, some kind of tenured staff's name on the list for reduction. Or for unrequested leave, I should say, excuse me.
Okay, Board Members, other questions? Okay, move forward with the vote. It's a roll call vote.
Bogut.
Aye.
Hardy. Iverson.
Aye.
Quinell.
Aye.
Stratlon.
Aye.
Richard.
Aye.
Okay, so we will move on to the second piece, which is the resolution relating to the termination and nonrenewal of the teaching contract of a probationary teacher. Again, Dr. Richardson, procedural piece we do every year?
Sure. And again, this is a process that we use, again, to identify individuals who have not only decisions being made because of their probationary status, but also in some cases, issues because they have one-year contracts, where it specifically indicates that at the end of the year, the contract is no longer in force. What we know is that especially during the late 2000s, that we had some situations where people that had, and it was clear that they had one-year contracts, when their contract ended, had gone back and actually challenged whether their contract could be not renewed, even though it was a one-year contract. And so our attorney has recommended to us always that even with those folks that have one-year contracts and knew they had one-year contracts coming in, we go through a formal process of terminating those contracts so that it's very clear that the contracts end at the end of the year. Matt, you might want to share anything else you want on that, this piece?
Right. It's the requirement that we have to ensure that probationary staff who are not being invited back next year through a number of different reasons, long-term substitute, one-year contracts, tenure decisions, those kinds of pieces. That's what all of these particular individuals are, and we're required by law to make sure that we take actual action to terminate and nonrenew their contracts. And so the resolution then off, you have a template of the letter that is sent to those staff afterwards. Each one will get an individual letter, and we go from there.
So the motion is to adopt the resolution related to the termination and nonrenewal of the teaching contract of probationary licensed teachers listed above, effective at the end of the 2015-16 school year. Is there a motion to approve? Moved? I'm sorry. Motion, moved by Rob, seconded?
Seconded.
Seconded by Ellen. So any questions or discussion on this piece? Rob?
Matt, when the letters go out, does it specify the reason, either that they've been denied tenure or that it's just a one-year contract or whatever?
The, the letter itself does not provide rationale or reasons in the letter, but people, there's a procedure for people to request those reasons in writing. It's not done by default, but there's a procedure that people can request that information, should they so choose.
It's actually the last, if you look at the last paragraph of the sample letter. You may officially request the school board give its reasons for the nonrenewal of your teaching contract. However, such written requests should be received within 10 calendar days after the receipt of this notice. So we don't routinely provide those reasons, but any, any individual teacher who wishes to have those reasons simply makes that request, and then we provide those reasons.
And to be clear, a conversation has taken place between an administrator and the individual affected. So the discussion about rationale and those pieces has taken place. But if people want to ask for that further in writing component, you know, that is something that they're allowed to do under the procedure.
Other questions?
And I have a kind of comment that's not germane to this particular list, but just to the issue of termination of probationary staff in general. At least in my experience as a parent of elementary students, it, from the outside, appeared to happen a few times that probationary staff perhaps might have thrived, given a greater degree of support. And so it, I will want to continue the conversation about ways to adjust the professional support that we give to probationary staff as we go forward.
That's always a goal of ours, and we continue to work on that. I know, you know, Amy Sieve and the association, that's also a goal that we hold in common. I will really compliment the association. They have done a tremendous amount, from their perspective, to reach out to probationary staff as a colleague-to-colleague, and I think that's been a very good approach this year. There's always more that we can do for our probationary staff. That being said, Fritz, too, one of the most important decisions that we make is whether to offer an individual a continuing contract or not. And so there are times where providing a tremendous amount of support for individuals still may not get them to the proficiency level. And it's, it's a, it's a challenging decision that a principal makes not to bring back, we are the people who hire these folks. I mean, so there's a real investment in terms of that piece. We also think it's, it's one of the most important decisions that our principals make, and actually, the association and the district over the years have very clearly articulated together that that is a decision that we need to take when, within the parameters of the Teacher Tenure Act.
Yeah, and it may just, it may, there may be an education issue, that there may be a well-thought-out, well-structured process for providing that professional support. I may just be under-informed on those issues.
I will tell you, we can always do better with that.
Okay, thank you. Other questions coming? Okay, so we will move to roll call vote on the resolution.
Stratlon. Quinell.
Aye.
Iverson.
Aye.
Hardy.
Aye.
Bogut.
Aye.
Richard.
Aye.
Okay. We'll move on to approval of the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were a few personnel items in the table file that were added to the consent grouping. Is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping?
I just have a question.
Sure.
I don't know if it's worth pulling.
Sure.
Can I just ask the question about the SEVSEC hires? Are those also approved by Faribault?
Actually, remember that in terms of SEVSEC, basically, they have determined what positions are going to be offered. However, the actual contracts are all ours.
Okay.
And so that, the strategy is that while Cannon-Battley, Special Education Cooperative, has to determine what are all the staff needs that we have to run the two programs, the one in Northfield and the one in Faribault. When they, we get done, basically, it's handed off to Northfield to actually do the hiring of all those individuals under our contracts.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the.
No, we don't.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have a motion to approve the, sorry about that. Motion to approve the consent group, moved by Ellen, seconded, seconded by Noel. Okay. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to items for information. First item is first reading of the revised School Board Policy 721 regarding grant writing. Dr. Richardson?
Okay, and I just, I'm going to open this up and ask Matt just to follow up on it. Basically, the changes that are being proposed in terms of the grant writing policy, you notice, are really focused in terms of applicant responsibilities, and trying to make sure that as individuals who are moving forward, identifying potential grants, are making sure that they are moving through the program, Administrator and Director of Finance, prior to submitting the grant application. Important things here simply are issues around making sure that we understand how money is going to flow from the grant, in terms of the timeframe and so on. It's also looking at if there are shared costs or in-kind contributions that are required from the school district. It also looks at what kinds of tails might be on the grant in terms of an expectation that once a demonstration grant is completed, an expectation that a district would continue on. All of those things, we want to make sure we follow through on. And we believe that having our Director of Finance review those grants with the administrator who's doing the grant writing will assure that we don't end up in situations where we are not fully prepared to not only accept the money, but dispend it appropriately.
Yeah, I think you hit the key things, Chris. I think that you also see that, you know, prior to this proposed modification, every grant application, whether it was $250 or $55,000 or $155, needed to come to the board. And there are some smaller grants that are really pieces that we want to help people facilitate, most of the time for some kind of curriculum, or maybe it's a field trip or other, other pieces like that. So, you know, the key thing is, we want to make sure that grants are substantial enough. And Val and I really looked at what was the number, that we thought what we're really after is if a grant is going to hire people. That's where we think the board really needs to be informed. And as we looked at it, about a $15,000 cutoff seemed to be the reasonable point. So it's two-pronged. One, to make sure that the grants that you are seeing are ones that are substantial in nature. The second piece is to facilitate a simpler submission process for some of these smaller grants that we see a number of foundations who are now offering, where people can get things or some other kinds of things for their classroom. So two-pronged approach here.
So Board Members, this is the first reading of this policy, so we would come back at our next meeting and look for approval. So is there any other immediate questions? Okay, so as you look through the policy for the next board meeting, if you have any questions in the meantime, Dr. Richardson or Dr. Hulman could answer those questions?
Okay.
Okay. Second, last item for information is the enrollment report for April of 2016.
And as you can see, we've changed dramatically. Just a groundswell of additional student population. The interesting thing is, we are at the highest number we've had all year. And we continue to be over 4,000 students in terms of our total population. You'll also notice, however, that the real growth areas are in early childhood, where we've gone from 66 to 89 kids, and at the ALC, where we started at 43, and we're now up at 60. So again, numbers are, have remained very stable going forward. And we've had our traditional reduction at the high school, which we would normally have every year. So nothing major to report in terms of that area. I think our numbers are good. And again, as I mentioned earlier, while we, we have some issues at, especially at the high school level in terms of that significant variation in class sizes. If you look at elementary class sizes, you basically are looking at the number of sections that are over 27 students. You have two sections at Greenville Park that are over 27. You have two sections at Sibley that are over 27. And you have, I believe, two sections of, at Bridgewater that are over 27. So it, again, our numbers are really pretty solid. And as you look, especially at, as you move through the grade levels, most of our numbers are down in the lower twenties for primary and the mid twenties for intermediate grade levels. So I think, again, we've been able to do a really good job of maintaining, I think, reasonable class sizes at the same time, trying to be very conscious of trying to maintain the dollars we need to go forward. Nothing dramatic or shaking to share.
Okay. Any questions or comments on the enrollment report? Rob?
I'm just wondering about the huge ninth grade class, whether that will have, is there any way to predict what impact that might have on, you know, when they have discussions of enrollment, when we've got a huge number of ninth grade students in that class?
Okay, because actually, the, the large class right now is the ninth grader.
Right.
So, so, yeah, it, it has that tsunami, tsunami effect as it kind of goes through the grade levels. And I think it is, it will have the impact of us having to be, I think, very watchful in terms of how we address the staffing needs. Because the reality is, the, you know, the, the numbers may be higher at certain grade levels. But again, our number at 1275 is what it's been all year and what it has been, we've hovered in the, in the 1250 to 1275 number again for the last decade. So it's more a matter of trying to address it at individual levels and making sure that in the case of, of classes where you have a bump because of that big next-year sophomore class, being able to make sure that we can address that going forward.
And Rob, the area where we've seen that really have the biggest impact is in some core classes that all students are required to take. And what we've done since this group of students was in middle school is we've used the contingency fund that we have, that funds approximately a total of three FTE, to address those hot spots in some specific areas. As, as the students get through their sophomore year in high school, I think we'll see less of those trouble spots because there's more choice. It was more difficult when kids were in sixth, seventh, because they're all required to take certain courses and even in ninth and 10th grade. So I think the problem will, you know, the problem of needing those contingency FT to address those hot spots will most likely dissipate as they get older in high school. And as a parent of a child in that, I think it probably will. But at the same time, we do, that's the purpose of the contingency fund. It allows our administrators the ability to allocate FT in a flexible basis, based upon where there's those very high class, high numbers in various courses.
The other thing, too, Rob, as, as we look at that, is that we have the greatest flexibility in high school also of making use of an overload strategy, which is not always the best strategy every time, but in many cases where we have qualified and experienced teachers and we can help balance class sizes and keep class sizes from getting larger. It's a lot easier to add a two-tenth to a teacher's schedule and eliminate a supervisory period oftentimes there than it is, it is at the elementary level where there just is no place else that that FTE can come from if it isn't in the, in the classroom. So we, I would say, the older the kids get, the greater flexibility we have to address those needs as we go forward. Good question.
And large class sizes is a good problem to have.
It's, it is much better than the alternative, where you start having to make significant cuts in staff.
Okay. Yeah, Jeff?
Why is that, I mean, I should say 360, if that, would that sustain itself and be that bigger class when they graduated? And if, if they did, that would be a record class, I would guess.
Yeah, and it's, I think it has the potential to, to stay there. You're, you're going to see some attrition going forward. But, you know, none, none of the other classes that we have, and you see that we've got another class of 317 that's, that are juniors right now, and we have a class in seventh grade that's also a 317. That's basically been, up to that point, you know, some of our largest classes or anything that's approaches 300 kids. So even with some attrition here, and we do have some attrition, it isn't always, it isn't normally dropout, but there are people that are going to move, there are people that are going to go to other schools and so on. But I would bet that we're likely to have a, you know, a number, you know, in the 340 range by the time those kids get ready to graduate, which would be the largest class that I've seen in the last 12 years.
Me, too.
So we hope it's a sunny day, because that will be extremely difficult to get off this.
That would not, would not be pretty in the, in the high school gym.
Okay. All right, good questions. So good discussion. So with that, I will just highlight future meetings, which is Monday, April 25th, and Monday, May 9th, both at 7:00 PM in the High School Media Center. So if there's nothing further, with that, I ask for motion that we adjourn.
We adjourn?
Moved by Noel, second?
Second.
Second by Ellen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.